Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the City Council Chambers today. We are one member shy of a quorum, but we are going to start since Friday. We do have, as customary, to present resolutions. And I would like to call us to attention and recognize Councilmember Dennis Zein.
Thank you, Madam President, and good morning. January 21st, 2005. It's going to be a wonderful day in Los Angeles. And we have a little presentation for someone who doesn't want to be recognized today. We're going to recognize him because of his 29 years of service. And I think we need to get Sergeant Arms to bring him over. Ronald Thomas Butcher! Sergeant Arms. He doesn't want this recognition, but we're going to do it in spite of what he's demanded. Ronald Thomas Butcher. He's retiring from city service after nearly 30 years of service with the City of Los Angeles. Sergeant, I think we need the handcuffs on him. He's still having breakfast. Ron, I know that you are a man who is very humble, but we are very appreciative of what you have done for us and for the city and for three decades for the City of Los Angeles, the people of Los Angeles. Now he wants to get his drink. He's still chewing his muffin.
He's walking out.
Well, Ron's retiring from our city after nearly three decades of service. He is the City Council's photographer. And all the photos that have been taken over the last three decades, Ron Butcher is the man that has done that. He's been in the front row and witnessed many historical events. Many public figures, mayors, presidents, religious leaders, sports, entertainment celebrities, and last but not least, ordinary residents and employees who are the true face of the City of Los Angeles. I hear the town crier back there. There he is. Hey, you can come on up with those bells. Come on up, town crier. You can ring those bells. Ron began his employment with the city on December 22nd, 1975. Senior photographer for the Chief Legislative Analyst Office. Successfully promoted to radio and TV programmer and progressively higher salary levels. Slow, but got there, Ron. Ron's attitude has been one of great cooperation. Willingness to work odd hours and always at the whim of elected officials to photograph events. Well-liked and respected by elected officials, coworkers, and even the news media. Able to adapt to numerous pressure-type assignments in which he had to respond to the media, council members, mayor, colleagues, and other staff members. And Ron's had a long dream of living in Las Vegas. Not that he's a gambler, but he enjoys Las Vegas. And his mom and dad reside in Las Vegas, and he's a wonderful son to take care of his mom and dad. And he and his wonderful wife Nancy are going to be moving to Las Vegas to enjoy that golden year that we all look forward to. And Ron's not only a friend, but he's a neighbor of mine. And we share sports cars for a hobby and enjoy camaraderie. And it's going to be a loss to us, the City of Los Angeles, and all the work that he has done and the thousands and thousands and thousands of photos that Ron has taken over the years. He's always that silent man in the background taking the photos. And people who have those photos can appreciate Ron for his wonderful photographic ability. So, Ron, I know you didn't want a recognition. I know you wanted to leave quietly. This is your last day. In fact, Ron asked me, how's he going to get home? Because he turned into city car, so he has no way home. We'll get you on the rapid bus. The rapid bus. You'll get there by the... You'll be there in 32 years. Anyway, on behalf of my colleagues, and I'm sure they're going to have comments, we really appreciate all you've done for all the many, many years here at City Hall and for all of the former council members, all the elected officials, that you've made look so good over the years with your photographs. You've been a marvelous friend, a wonderful photographer, and I'm really sad to see you leaving. But I know that's your wish and your desire and your happy place up in Las Vegas. So, Ron, congratulations from me, the town crier, and all your friends here at City Hall. Jerry, a few words?
Well, Ron, we're certainly going to miss you. It's going to be strange without you. I think we've got the entire CLA staff gathered around to wish you good luck. Your humor sometimes, as bad as it could be, is going to be sorely missed. And you truly are irreplaceable. You've made an amazing contribution to the city. Congratulations.
And, Ron, as you can imagine, Mr. Zein, there is a lineup. So, get ready. Let me start with Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Mr. Butcher, it will not be the same round here without you. Trigger finger Butcher is always at the ready. And I know that's really Mr. Zein's nickname, but we'll give it to Mr. Butcher. Your sense of humor, I think, not only puts people at ease the first time they're visiting City Hall, you are as important as anybody around this horseshoe to how people feel about their government. Because you take them in the back, you take their picture, you put them at ease. And for each one of us, I mean, your sense of humor always brings a lot of levity to the day as well. We had the honor of being able to honor you as one of our heroes in CD-13 recently. But when I think about when we were, for instance, debating superstores, when you'd always drop me a note that said there's a new Walmart opening in Silver Lake and that kind of stuff, or that you just got your film at Walmart, you know, that sense of humor that you had was always something that made our days great here. And I personally am most excited that we'll have a crash pad now in Las Vegas when we all go there on our council outings. And for you as well, I know that you're going to always consider this home, but you've really made, for me, the last three and a half years so tremendously enjoyable. Wish you all the best in your semi-retirement. And know that every day that we are here, there'll be a place for you if you ever want to come back and snap some more photos. Thanks.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ron, I just want to congratulate you on 29 years with the city. Four years actually working. It's a great accomplishment. I know, as Mr. Garcetti said, your jokes will be missed because I always heard them first here, and then they'd work their way through the building. By Friday, they were coming back at you here in the room from various departments and bureaus of the city. But you've been a great charm to have around here, a real levity when sometimes it was missing in this chamber. And I know Mr. Burnson sends his best regards to him, particularly because we had your lovely wife Nancy on our district staff for a number of years. And she's truly a lovely, charming lady. Kept our office laughing in Northridge just as much as you did down here. And I just want to wish you the best of luck. You deserve every bit of it. I just talked to Mr. Deaton. He sends his regards. He wanted to come over and sign your discharge papers, but no one told him, so he apologized. That's an inside joke for the 15 of us. Anyway, just best wishes to you. You're a great friend. I've enjoyed joking with you. You're always there when any one of us called, no matter day or night, weekends, to come out and make sure we have the pictures we needed for our records and for the people in our districts who wanted to see that they were involved and things like that. But you're just a great friend. You're truly be missed, and God bless you. Good luck. And I'll take Mr. Garcetti up on that trip to Vegas someday. Maybe we'll go see you.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. I too want to rise and give my heartfelt thanks to Ron. What I really appreciate about Ron is that we had very nervous people coming here. People from different... that spoke different languages from different countries. Were always very much the gentleman. Were able to address everyone as young lady, young man. Was able to ease a lot of that tension because for many people, this is their first time they come into City Hall. And all of this marble and all this grandeur can be intimidating, but you had a way of calming people down. They didn't know that they were the experts with the cameras and took those great shots. So, Ron, we're going to miss you. I've known you since the late '80s, early '90s. We're here now, and it's great to see you leave with such a smile. Thanks, Ron.
Ms. Gruehl.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair and Ron. We've had a long-time friendship. One when I was running around here as a youngster where we counted on you. And I think from the history pages, you have taken thousands, hundreds of thousands probably of pictures in the City of Los Angeles. I've seen the evolution of not only the number of different elected officials, but the issues that have been before us. And I think you have been more than just the photographer for us. You've been the friend, you've been the advisor. You'll come and tell us either how we have to stand, or you did a good job today. And so I think you should leave city service knowing that it was more than a job. I know it was more than a job for you, but for those of us that have worked with you, it was more than a job that you held. It was a friendship. And so you will be missed. I know in the last few years, you said, "It's kind of fun around here." That you, in your 29 years, this was one of the best city councils. And so I... colleagues, I don't know if he has said that to you, but I wanted to share that, that he has felt very strongly to an affinity to all of us in the council. So, Ron, I know we kind of surprised you today, and you don't like to be the center of attention, but guess what? You don't get a choice today. And you're getting your picture taken, which I'm sure you don't like either. Right, as you shake your head no. So, thank you for your years of service. Thanks for your friendship. We'll all come visit you and stay with you in Las Vegas and come back and see us, but you'll be sorely missed here in the at the whim of elected officials to photograph events, well-liked and respected by elected officials, coworkers, and even the news media. Able to adapt to numerous pressure-type assignments in which he had to respond to the media, council members, mayor, colleagues, and other staff members. And Ron's had a long dream of living in Las Vegas. Not that he's a gambler, but he enjoys Las Vegas, and his mom and dad reside in Las Vegas, and he's a wonderful son to take care of his mom and dad. And he and his wonderful wife Nancy are gonna be moving to Las Vegas to enjoy that golden year that we all look forward to. And Ron's not only a friend, but he's a neighbor of mine, and we share sports cars for a hobby and enjoy camaraderie. And it's gonna be a loss to us, the City of Los Angeles, and all the work that he has done and the thousands and thousands and thousands of photos that Ron has taken over the years. He's always that silent man in the background taking the photos, and people who have those photos can appreciate Ron for his wonderful photographic ability. So, Ron, I know you didn't want a recognition. I know you wanted to leave quietly. This is your last day. In fact, Ron asked me, "How's he gonna get home?" Because he turned into City Car, so he has no way home. We'll get you on the rapid bus. The rapid bus. You'll get there by the... You'll be there in thirty-two years. Anyway, on behalf of my colleagues, and I'm sure they're gonna have comments, we really appreciate all you've done for all the many, many years here at City Hall and for all of the former council members, all the elected officials, that you've made look so good over the years with your photographs. You've been a marvelous friend, a wonderful photographer, and I'm really sad to see you leaving. But I know that's your wish and your desire and your happy place up in Las Vegas. So, Ron, congratulations from me, the town crier, and all your friends here at City Hall. Jerry, few words?
Well, Ron, we're certainly gonna miss you. It's going to be strange without you. I think we've got the entire CLA staff gathered around to wish you good luck. Your humor sometimes, as bad as it could be, is gonna be sorely missed. And you truly are irreplaceable. You've made an amazing contribution to the city. Congratulations.
And, Ron, as you can imagine, Mr. Zine, there is a lineup, so get ready. Let me start with Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Mr. Butcher, it will not be the same round here without you. Trigger Finger Butcher is always at the ready. And I know that's really Mr. Zine's nickname, but we'll give it to Mr. Butcher. Your sense of humor, I think, not only puts people at ease the first time they're visiting City Hall, you are as important as anybody around this horseshoe to how people feel about their government, because you take them in the back, you take their picture, you put them at ease. And for each one of us, I mean, your sense of humor always brings a lot of levity to the day as well. We had the honor of being able to honor you as one of our heroes in CD-13 recently, but when I think about when we were, for instance, debating superstores, when you'd always drop me a note that said, "There's a new Walmart opening in Silver Lake," and that kind of stuff, or that you just got your film at Walmart. You know, that sense of humor that you had was always something that made our days great here. And I personally am most excited that we'll have a crash pad now in Las Vegas when we all go there on our council outings. And for you as well, I know that you're gonna always consider this home, but you've really made, for me, the last three and a half years so tremendously enjoyable. Wish you all the best in your semi-retirement, and know that every day that we are here, there'll be a place for you if you ever wanna come back and snap some more photos. Thanks.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ron, I just wanna congratulate you on twenty-nine years with the city, four years actually working. It's a great accomplishment. I know, as Mr. Garcetti said, your jokes will be missed, because I always heard them first here, and then they'd work their way through the building, and by Friday, they were coming back at you here in the room from various departments and bureaus of the city. But you've been a great charm to have around here, a real levity when sometimes it was missing in this chamber. And I know Mr. Burnson sends his best regards too, particularly because we had your lovely wife Nancy on our district staff for a number of years, and she's truly a lovely, charming lady, kept our office laughing in Northwood just as much as you did down here. And I just wanna wish you the best of luck. You deserve every bit of it. I just talked to Mr. Deaton. He sends his regards. He wanted to come over and sign your discharge papers, but no one told him, so he apologized. That's an inside joke for the fifteen of us. Anyway, just best wishes to you. You're a great friend. I've enjoyed joking with you. You're always there when any one of us called, no matter day or night, weekends, to come out and make sure we have the pictures we needed for our records and for the people in our districts who wanted to see that they were involved and things like that. But you're just a great friend. You're truly be missed, and God bless you. Good luck. And I'll take Mr. Garcetti up on that trip to Vegas someday, maybe we'll go see ya.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. I too wanna rise and give my heartfelt thanks to Ron. What I really appreciate about Ron is that we had very nervous people coming here, people from different... that spoke different languages, from different countries. We're always very much the gentlemen, were able to address everyone as young lady, young man, and was able to ease a lot of that tension, because for many people, this is their first time they come into City Hall, and all of this marble and all this grandeur can be intimidating. But you had a way of calming people down. They didn't know that they were the experts with the cameras, and took those great shots. So, Ron, we're gonna miss you. I've known you since the late eighties, early nineties. We're here now, and it's great to see you leave with such a smile. Thanks, Ron.
Ms. Gruel.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair and Ron. We've had a long-time friendship, one when I was running around here as a youngster, where we counted on you. And I think from the history pages, you have taken thousands, hundreds of thousands probably, of pictures in the City of Los Angeles, and seen the evolution of not only the number of different elected officials, but the issues that have been before us. And I think you have been more than just the photographer for us. You've been the friend, you've been the advisor. You'll come and tell us either how we have to stand, or you did a good job today. And so I think you should leave city service knowing that it was more than a job. I know it was more than a job for you, but for those of us that have worked with you, it was more than a job that you held. It was a friendship. And so you will be missed. I know in the last few years, you said, "It's kinda fun around here." That you, in your twenty-nine years, this was one of the best city councils. And so I... colleagues, I don't know if he has said that to you, but I wanted to share that, that he has felt very strongly to a affinity to all of us in the council. So, Ron, I know we kinda surprised you today, and you don't like to be the center of attention, but guess what? You don't get a choice today, and you're getting your picture taken, which I'm sure you don't like either. Right, as you shake your head no. So, thank you for your years of service. Thanks for your friendship. We'll all come visit you and stay with you in Las Vegas and come back and see us, but you'll be sorely missed here in the City of Los Angeles.
Mr. Cardenas.
I just wanted to accentuate what Mr. Reyes said about the way you treat people, Ron. People come here to these chambers, and they can be very intimidating, and we get an opportunity to honor some wonderful people here in these chambers, and you have the responsibility of making us all look good and making... and painting that picture that's worth a thousand words and making sure that that memory will last forever. So, I just wanted to say thank you, Ron, for all the work that you've done. And also, I learned a lot from you when we're just chatting on the side about how crafty you are and how you work on your house and the kinds of things that you appreciate. It just reminds us all that, you know, even though we're professionals so many hours a week, we're still just ourselves. We go home to hopefully a beautiful wife like you have, or we have the kinds of things that we have to do, the honeydews or whatever it is that we do outside of our professional responsibilities. And you're the kinda guy that's always calm, cool, and collected, and takes things in stride. I hope you enjoy yourself, and it sounds like you outlived the other Ron here in these chambers. Congratulations.
Mr. Parks.
Good morning, Ron. Why you look so uncomfortable? You haven't even got to speak yet. Okay. No, you standing next to Dennis. That's why you're uncomfortable. Okay. All right. No, I just wanna say thank you. Well-earned retirement after thirty years is something I'm sure you've looked forward to, but you still have the greater part of your life to look forward to, even though you're just to our eastern flank. Now that you're moving to Las Vegas, I can let my daughter know that Uncle Ron will be there and get a chance to visit you, 'cause she's been there for the last ten years. But I just wanna say thank you for all of your help, not just your professional photography, but your advice, your sense of humor, your counsel, and just being a presence. You're one of those people that people will always remember for the impact you made on their lives. So, thank you very much.
Ron, Mr. Labange is asked to speak, but asked to be the last word, so before he speaks, I'm just gonna say too, really thank you for incredible, incredible, Ron. And I was reminded, not only as others were speaking, that among the hundreds of thousands of pictures you've taken, there really have been some very, very historic moments here in the city that you've been a part of too. We talk about your humor and your joking around, and that makes the day a lot more comfortable. But you also have been here on very, very solemn occasions, very historic occasions, and we have the tribute of that and the memory of that because of the pictures you've shot. And I was thinking, as Tony talked about, always making us look good. I think you may have shared with most of us some of those pictures that don't make us look so good, and you get a kick out of them, and you get a kick out of teasing us and showing them around, but it's just between us. You never let those see the light of day beyond that. And we also appreciate that, because we all can get caught in our little bit of off-guard moment as well. So, appreciate, above all, a word that's probably not used with you very often, but your decorum. And now let me recognize Councilmember Labange.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Ron, congratulations. So many nice things have been said, as Tony and Ed said about how you made people feel at ease, and as Cindy mentioned, all the history that you saw here in thirty years, from the Queen of England to the prince to the President of the United States-elect who was here, and even Bill Clinton was here, I believe, at the time that you were here, although not inside City Hall. And then the hundreds of thousands, not only of pictures, of miles that he drove in this city, throughout our districts, to spots for park dedications and libraries. You've captured it all, Ron, and I'm just happy for him, happy for Nancy. You are a great couple who served the city well, as she was a deputy for the 12th District for many years in Mr. Burnson's administration. And I'm just pleased that you're able to do this, and I wanna thank you for the early years of serving the community in various ways, who are out in North Hollywood at the famous Palomino Club, and all the great times that we had out there in our olden days. But also, as Mr. Parks said too, your advice that you often give us, little tips were very helpful. So, Ron, you truly are an angel in the City of Angels, and I'm glad the sergeants were able to capture you, and I'm glad Dennis Zine took the initiative to get all of us on a piece of paper to salute Ron Butcher, 'cause there's nobody like Ron Butcher. There's nobody like Ron Butcher, and you really were a credit to this, and I'm sure Tony Radavicki would be happy to... Tony Radovich, but we call him Radavicki. And Sarge and all the old gang that was here. And remember when the communists came stumbling through here one day and attacked the city council? I don't know, that's about twenty-five years ago, and the pictures that you took of all that event. Ron, you're a hero. You've captured it all through that lens, and I know all that work one day will be in the archives that the city library has, where it has over a hundred thousand, maybe even a million, three hundred thousand impressions, and yours will certainly be there. Ron Butcher, congratulations to you.
Ron, your turn.
Well, I'm a little unprepared for this, but it's been a really lot of fun. It's just been incredible, the photos I've taken with Indira Gandhi and President Aquino and Mayor Bradley, just absolutely incredible experience. I never dreamed I would ever experience the things I've experienced. And someone told me that the most important thing that you have in the world is time, and that's what I'm just trying to get. I want to... I'm fifty-eight years old, and hopefully I'll be around for a while, and I'll have twenty or so years of retirement, but it's been great. And I wanna thank all the council members, and Wendy's right, this was... you folks are the best people as a group. I mean, forget about elected officials. You're the best group of people I've ever worked with. I mean, you're very kind, and you're compassionate, sometimes a little too liberal, Eric, but great, great people. And I wanna thank Ken Spiker for hiring me, and I wanna thank Ron Deaton for reminding me it was time to go. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ron. And I think this is a moment that calls for a group photo.
Group photo. Group photo. Group photo. Come on, group photo. Group photo.
Mr. Clerk, I believe it's... we can call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Gruel, Han, Labange, Ludlow, Meskowsky, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vina Gosa, Weiss, Zine, Padilla, eleven members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
All right. Members, we're going to take, since we do have a quorum, and some people are leaving early, we're going to go through the agenda very quickly before we return back to presentations. Mr. Clerk.
First order would be approval of the minutes.
Mr. Reyes approves. Mr. Weiss second. Some minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those are also approved.
On the regular agenda, items one and two are items for which public hearings have been held.
All right. Items one and two are before us, members. Are there any specials? Items one and two, seeing none, open the... Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Labange?
I'm ahead.
Okay, then items one and two are before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved.
Items three through twelve are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration. And on item nine, there was a request by Councilmember Padilla to request to continue that to January 25th.
All right. We will continue item nine till January 25th, but there is a card, so if a person would like to speak, we will call that special just for the purposes of seeing if the person would like to speak. Members, any other specials, three through twelve? Mr. Labange. Twelve. Item twelve is called special by Mr. Labange. Any other specials, members? Seeing none, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. I'd like to ask item eleven, go forth with. And let us return now to public presentations, and let me recognize Councilmember Jan Perry.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and I'd like to ask the members of our city family to please join me. Kit Awakuni, Cynthia Kuzo, Vince Kitoriano, Cora Smith, Bob Janavici, Heather Dalmont, and Patty Iolongo, come on up. I think that many of the council members who have districts where we are presented with great challenges in enforcement and compliance and the quality of life issues understand how important nuisance abatement is to us in doing our jobs. And Mr. Reyes, if you have a second, please feel free to come up, 'cause you're gonna be up here for a while anyway. Thank you. Nuisance abatement is a major part of my effort to enhance the quality of life for the constituents in Council District Nine, and the men and women here today are all part of the nuisance abatement unit under the leadership of Robert Janavici. They have been instrumental in devising a systematic way of investigating nuisance abatement complaints and initiating cases. And with their help and technical support, we have successfully closed nuisance properties in the Ninth, like the Oakwood Hotel, the Linden Hotel, the Ross Hotel, and a bar called Chileno's Bar, all of these sites were places where criminal activity took place or blight was a constant problem. In fact, thanks to their help, the Oakwood Motel, a former prostitution motel, is going to be demolished to make way for new townhomes in South Los Angeles. These individuals behind me have made this possible. And finally, they are working in a multi-department task force to strengthen the municipal code pertaining to nuisance abatement. This means we can push even harder to stop nuisance property from affecting the quality of life for our residents, and I wanna thank all of them, because they're truly committed to improving our communities and supporting us in our goals. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Jan. This is really great. I'm glad you're doing this. Councilmembers, I don't believe any of us understands the type of pressure and workload these planners are under. And to see the transformation in many of our neighborhoods because of their effort in conjunction with the city attorney's office, with the LAPD, the fire department, building and safety, but these are the folks that give us all the legal underpinnings, all the documentation that speaks to revocation, and that is a key element. But it's not only these folks. We have a whole bench full of planners who are also here. You guys wanna stand up? Come on, you guys are the unsung heroes. Stand up. This is a team effort. Again, I wanna thank Jan for recognizing this group of folks. I can share with you, there's a very modest person here, Patty Iolongo, who's also retiring. I thought I'd bring that up. I've known her for many years, working code studies once upon a time. One of the best jobs she had is she was part-time all the way, so that was pretty cool. But the bottom line is, without them, many of these changes that Councilmember Perry has recognized would not have been made possible. I wanna thank Jan for doing this, and I believe we all should stand and salute these folks. And maybe in budget time, we can think about how we can be supportive of the planning department to continue the good, hard work. Thank you very much.
I'd like to thank both councilmembers Perry and Reyes for recognizing the staff. And even though I may be a face you more likely recognize, it's these people here, those people there, and all the planners up on the Fifth, Sixth, and Seventh Floor that really do the heavy lifting, and they're the ones that make the rest of us look good. Once again, thank you.
Mr. Labange? Did you want to speak?
I just wanted to thank Jan and everybody there. Bob, what you said about all the people, you extract... you're like great dentists. If there's a cavity in a neighborhood, you pull it out. And that becomes a bright smile in a community. You know, I mean, it's very tough. It's probably a poor analogy, you know, a poor analogy. But you get a bright smile because of the hard work that you do, and I'm sure there's hundreds of police officers throughout the city who have to go to these places, and you make so much more efficient use of the city's time because of the work that you do, all of you collectively. I would just wanted to thank you. Thank you, Ms. Perry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Thank you, Ms. Perry and Mr. Reyes. And for our final presentation, let me... Are you continuing?
I'm sorry, we have one more. And Mr. Reyes is going to stay here with me. I have a big stack. I think we'll have to take those in the back, too. I would like to ask the Ecuador 2000 Committee to join us. President Eddie Salazar, Treasurer Fred Bolanos, Secretary Lupe Tapia, Vice President Marcelo Izquierdo, Coordinator Elba Barus, Dance Director Mario Andrade, Director of the Queens, Paulina Hermansen, Festival Director Bolivar Enriquez, Parade Director Edwin Koba, Artist... Artistic Director Hector Real, Public Relations and Marketing Silvana Paredes, and then Dr. Luis Morales, Vice Mayor of the City of Ambato, Hilda Miranda, Councilwoman... Councilwoman, where's the councilwoman?
She's downstairs.
Oh, she's downstairs, okay. Probably in security. Of the City of Cevallos, Diego Villasis, Councilman of the City of Cevallos... Cevallos, I'm sorry, Cevallos, Marco Ortiz, Vice Mayor of the City of Mocha? Mocha. Dr. Mariana Chavez, author, Julian Menya, artist and photographer, Luis Miigaye? Miigaye? Artist. All right. And I'm gonna have... We got a lot of... A long list here, and I'm gonna have Mr. Reyes help me, 'cause I'm already getting tired, getting over cold. I'm very happy to join with Mr. Reyes in hosting our very special guests here today, and we always look forward to the Ecuador 2000 presentation. And we have many distinguished guests here from Ecuador joining us today, and I think I've shared their names with you. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank and congratulate all of the members of the committee for their incredible work in planning last year's Independence Day parade and celebration, and the upcoming celebration, which I think many of us will be participating in. And I can tell you firsthand, from the last two parades I participated in with some of my colleagues, they were always a great, great success, met with a lot of enthusiasm, and I look forward to joining them again this year to celebrate the great history and culture of the people of Ecuador and those who call Los Angeles home. So, I would like to salute and welcome our visitors, and it is an honor to host all of you here in council today. And I hope you take time to enjoy the treasures that our city has to offer. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. I just wanna again salute Councilmember Perry. She does a wonderful job of celebrating this great diversity we have here in Los Angeles. In CD Nine, we're very fortunate to have a council member who has been so supportive of all peoples and all the traditions and all the cultures. And being able to look at the Ecuadorian traditions in the parade, the food, the song, and show the pride is something that we should all be celebrating together. For that, I wanna thank her. And all the sponsors, both on the private side, all the volunteers that make these events such a grand occasion. Thank you all, and congratulations, and we look forward to some great traditions that we continue to celebrate throughout the city. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Eddie Salazar. I'm the president. I wanna thank especially to the City of Los Angeles for the support, for the help that we received for the last year, 2004. A special is Jan Perry. Appreciate it for the time that you put in, and you enjoy it with us this morning, that we... A special event for the Ecuadorian community in Los Angeles and Latin America that they support us. Thank you one more time. And I wanna present Dr. Luis Morales, that he's from Ecuador, Ambato.
Good morning. Muy buenos dias.
Muy buenos dias. Quiero agradecer en nombre de la comunidad de ecuatorianos que se encuentran en esta bellísima ciudad de Los Ángeles por la colaboración que este gobierno municipal, ustedes señores concejales, señora alcaldesa, han tenido la bondad para mis conciudadanos. No lo olvidaremos y estaremos pendientes de esos, de que nuestros conciudadanos sigan apoyando al desarrollo de esta hermosa patria. Hemos hecho elaborar a nuestros artesanos ecuatorianos unos recuerdos auténticos con las características folclóricas del país para don Ed Reyes, concejal de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles.[642.12][642.12](APPLAUSE). Con nuestro escudo nacional a la señora doña Jan Perry, concejal de Los Ángeles, de igual forma con mucho cariño del pueblo ecuatoriano.[656.12][656.12](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Muchas gracias. Thank you. Councilmembers Perry and Reyes and, thank you.
Will you excuse me? I'm the general coordinator of the committee and also represent one of the associations of the Ecuadorian abroad. In behalf of all the Ecuadorian community, we want to thank each one of the council members here for permitting us celebrate the Ecuadorian festivities on the Broadway Street and on the Parish Square Park. This year, we wanted to celebrate also, and we already have asked Ms. Jan Perry to help us. There are two other council members that have helped us a lot, Bernard Park and Eric Garcetti. And for them, we have brought in the stamp of Ecuador who represent the dual nationality, the honor of being Ecuadorian American on this country. Por favor, please, council member Bernard Park, this is from Ecuador to you, in all the meanings that that means for us. Thank you. Thank you for all your support. Councilmember Eric Garcetti.
He may have stepped out, but we'll make sure that we receive that on his behalf.
We'll go by his office then.
Thank you.
We do thank you very much and expect all the help we need to celebrate this year, 2005, also our celebrities. Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you.[754.04][754.04](APPLAUSE).
And...
No, we can do it now. Or whatever you please.
Let me next call on Councilmember Tony Cardenas.
It's my pleasure and honor today to present a resolution to a person who gave 30 years of his professional life to the City of Los Angeles, and that's Samuel M. Namath, better known as the better-looking brother of Joe Namath. Right? Isn't that what you're known for? That's right. That's right. A little stretching the truth there on the relationship, but not on the fact of the good looks. He was employed back in 1975 as a tax and field permit representative, probably one of the jobs as oldest as mankind, and was promoted to senior tax and permit field representative in 1989. Sam Namath was promoted to management analyst on July 7, 1996, and most recently, he was promoted and is now working at the Marvin Browdy Center in the San Fernando Valley in Van Nuys. But more importantly, Sam has been a dedicated husband to his wife Laura, always taking out the trash and doing everything he's told all the time, right? She said yes, a convincing yes, no less. I say that jokingly because, as we all know, when we finish our careers and we do our job diligently, 40, 50, 60 hours a week for decades, we end up going home to the people who care and love us very much and the people who make sure that our tie is straightened and that we look good and that we're reminded of all the little details that our mother used to do when we were just little kids. That's the kind of person that Sam is, and that's the kind of person he was when he dedicated himself to this wonderful city. And it's my honor to introduce to all of you Sam Namath so he can say a few words about what it was like to work for all of us. Oh, I think his boss wants to say a few words first. Come on over.
On behalf of the Office of Finance, I just want to thank Sam for his dedicated years of service. He truly has been an asset to our department and to the city and has always been committed to ensuring that the city receives the revenue that's due to the city. Sam, I wish you well in your retirement, and we're really going to miss you in the Office of Finance.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Some 30 years ago, I was looking for a job. And I was offered a job with the City of Los Angeles, and I said to myself, well, I'm going to take this job, and when I find something better, I'm gone. Well, here it is 30 years later, and I'm here, and I must say it was a wonderful experience. I've had the opportunity to meet a lot of nice people, Mayor Reardon, Mayor Hahn, and some of my fellow workers. I can't say how much I appreciate working with them. And one of the first guys I worked with, I sat downstairs in room 101, and I looked to my right, and his name was Bill Fugioca. I must say that I'm not leaving the City of Los Angeles, I'm really leaving a family. I can't tell you how much I appreciate everything that has been done to me and given me the opportunity to become a supervisor and work with other people and bringing the money that paying all the salaries there. So again, I want to thank every one of you. It's been a pleasure working with the City of Los Angeles. And some people will say, well, I'm going to get out of here, I'm not going to miss anybody. I can make a fact statement, I'm going to miss everybody, and thank you very much.[1028.44][1028.44](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Sam. I want to dedicate this to you and your family for them allowing us to have you for 30 years, for so many hours of the day, and for so many years. I want to also congratulate you on raising two wonderful children, Robert and Michelle. And once again, Laura, you've got him back full-time. He's all yours.[1052.54][1052.54](APPLAUSE).
Thank you very much and congratulations. Members, I believe now is the time for public comment. So I'm going to call the cards that we have submitted for public comment period. Let me call forward at this time, Yolinda Jo Wright, Rosario Flores, Ronaldo Celis Flores, Manuel Garbe, and Susanna Cortez. Please begin.
I believe the expression of positive thoughts and observations about one's community is an essential element in a free-thinking society like ours. The reward for such expression shouldn't be a special residential designation for apartment number 16 for no response. I believe in positive reinforcements and rewards for doing the right thing. Thank you.[1128.12][1128.12](APPLAUSE).
The Representatives of the South Central Farmers, would you please come forward?
Good morning, my name is Alfredo Baquero. Somos los campesinos de 41 de Alameda. We're here because, day by day, to remind you that a person here put us in this situation that we're finding, we're trying to find some benefit.
Y no piensa en la comunidad cuando necesita el voto, si piensa en la comunidad.
And we're not, we don't believe that you guys think of the community, but you need to think about the committee and the vote in the committee.
Pero cuando la comunidad necesita de los altos funcionarios, no están para nosotros.
But when the committee needs the functions or the votes from the higher up, you're not for us. You're not for the community of Los Angeles.
Somos de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles y pagamos impuestos y tenemos el derecho de exigir que nos dejen con el espacio verde.
We're from the City of Los Angeles, we pay taxes, and we need the right, that we need to have the green space that we need to have.
Que tenemos en nuestra ciudad donde sembramos verduras para nuestras familias.
We need a green space where you plant green plants and give vegetables to our family, family members.
Recuerden que algún día las tierras serán para nosotros los campesinos. Gracias.
Remember that someday, these lands are for nosotros, for us, I'm sorry, the urban gardeners. Thank you.[1276.70][1276.70](APPLAUSE).
Mi nombre es Susanna Cortez.
My name is Susanna Cortez.
Vengo representando la sur centro de Los Angeles, farmer.
I come here to represent South Central Farmers.
Bueno, nosotros queremos que nos dejen el lugar ya que trabajamos la tierra.
We wanted to tell you that, please let us have that space now that we've worked the soil.
Lo que cultivamos es para sustento de nuestras familias.
What we cultivate is for our families.
También educamos a nuestros hijos para que no anden en pandillas, no anden en gangas.
We also educate our children so that they won't be in gangs, in gangs.
Y pues tenemos una familia unida y sana.
We have a united family together and healthy.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1341.97][1341.97](APPLAUSE).
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Federico Vargas, vengo representando el jardín número 41 de Los Ángeles.
Good morning, my name is Federico Vargas. I come here to represent South Central Farmers of Los Angeles.
Y tenemos bastante familia y que sembramos allí en los lotecitos, puros lagumbres.
We have a lot of families, we grow our plants to help our families in the small lots.
Y queremos que nos dejaron allí para seguir enseñando a mis nietos y mis hijos.
And I want us, I want you guys to let us stay there so we could show our grandkids and our sons.
Es todo, thank you.
That's all, thank you.[1395.83][1395.83](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Our final speaker is Don Garza.
Good morning, City of Los Angeles, the greatest city in all the world! And of course, with the greatest downtown in all the world, I hope we didn't insult our sister cities. In June, ladies and gentlemen, I have come to rally your support for the first weekend in June, under an ad hoc committee, of which I am, of course, the chair, the Town Choir Committee of the Neighborhood Council of the Arts, Aesthetics, Culture, and Education Committee, which is for short for ACE. They still think I'm not an artist, but I try to tell them I am, but that's okay. We're putting together a town choir competition, the first of its kind, in Los Angeles. So, Mr. Eric Garcetti, I've got news for you that you probably don't know about. First of all, I was interviewed by an LA Times reporter, and I said some pretty nasty things about Hollywood. So I may not get your support. But here's the deal. Now, I said some good things, but you know, I love downtown, and I don't see Hollywood as a sort of, as in my territory. It is, but it isn't. Now, check this out. In the year 2001, a gentleman by the name of, and you guys met him, he came in here, and he presented himself from East Riding of Yorkshire, Michael Wood, worked for the Hollywood bid, or one of those places. And to this day, when I go to Overa Street and I talk to some of the business people there about, you know, we want to hold our first cry on Overa Street at the Placita, they remember Mr. Michael Wood. And I'm going to tell you about Mr. Michael Wood, being that he's a world champion town choir. This year is a world champion year, championship year in Maryborough, Australia. Of course, I can't go because I ain't got the money. But he's going to go, and he's going to defend his title as world champion. You have a champion that has worked in Hollywood as a town choir, people love him, and maybe, just maybe, we can get him to come to our competition. I don't know. But it would be nice to get the red carpet, because let me tell you how competition works. I know, I got, do we have somebody else? Let me tell you how competition works. It's simple, it's easy. I got to find a way to provide logic. So I'm trying to go out into this community. The point is, this is how you do it. They come here, they cry about how great our city is, they cry about how great their city is. And the whole point is, if we roll out the red carpet all over the city, Mr. Labonge is getting involved, we got to take him around, show him around when they get here. Actually, one of the town criers is from Markham. And he's, he's actually a councilperson, he wants to come. And the point is, you roll out the red carpet, they go home, and they say how wonderful our city is, so they want to come back the next time. So I'm going to try to get the proposal to each one of your council offices. I know I've yelled and screamed at you guys a lot. I know that I've taken up a lot of your time. I'm wondering if I will get support, but I think I will. Janice Hahn, we're going to need your support. Wendy Grill, Tony Cardenas, everybody, this is a big deal for the whole city. And one of the points of this is to draw interest in the City of Los Angeles, so maybe we can accrue some more town criers in the city, so that way we can show how to promote each other's community in such a larger way, so we can do it on a much more local level and say, hey, I like your community, you like my community, let's do it and let's promote it together. Anyway, God bless you and God bless this great city of Los Angeles.
Thank you. That does conclude our public comment period. Mr. Clerk, what remains on the desk?
Item nine was called special, and as much as there was a card for the public.
That person spoke during the public comment period, so that can be continued for the, I believe, next Tuesday?
Yes, Tuesday, January 25th.
That will be the order.
Item 12 was called special by Councilmember Labonge, and there was an amending motion that has been circulated on that item.
All right, Mr. Labonge.
Just wanted to make sure the amending motion got squared away.
It has been circulated, is on the desk.
Thank you.
All right, item 12 is before us with the amendment. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved.
Council has motions for posting and referral?
They are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Padilla requests to be excused on Wednesday, January 26, to leave at 10:30 for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Smith moves. Mr. Reyes seconds. Mr. Padilla is excused.
Councilmember Grill requests to be excused for Friday, February 1, to leave at noon for city business, meets council policy.
Ms. Grill is excused on that date?
Councilmember Villagosa requests to be excused Wednesday, February 2, for personal business, meets council policy.
Mr. Villagosa is excused.
Councilmember Zine requests to be excused Friday, January 28, to leave at 11:30 for city business, meets council policy.
That excuse is approved.
Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused on Wednesday, January 26, for personal business. A motion is required.
Ms. Grill moves. Ms. Hahn seconds. Mr. Weiss is excused that date.
And Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused on Friday, January 28, to leave at 11:30 for city business. A motion is also required.
Mr. Labonge moves. Mr. Cardenas seconds. That...
That clears the desk, Madam President.
All right. Members, we are ready to adjourn. Are there any announcements? Mr. Labonge, did you have an announcement? Mr. Parks?
I have announcement. Today, for all of the Bruin fans, we're going to be over at USC today at a reception for the 11th championship, national championship for the USC football team. All of you are invited to come over, and the Heisman Trophy winner, Matt Leinart, will be there, Coach Carroll, the president of the university, and about... Matt Leinart, will be there, Coach Carroll, the president of the university, and about 6,000 USC fans will be able to be there so that you can get a chance to get up front and personal, and actually touch some of these championship football players. So, we just want to invite the public to the USC campus. Mr. Smith has the memorabilia to identify this is a great day for USC Trojans, and so we just wanted to invite the public and all members of the council to come over. We, as a council, gave three certificates, one to the president and the athletic department, one to Coach Carroll, and then one to Leinart, and then the Coliseum Commission will also be making a presentation in behalf of the city.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Other announcements? Mr. Cardenas.
Yes, for some of us, this USC thing is like Groundhog's Day. Just keep reliving it every day. Congratulations once again. Well deserved and well earned. Let's move on.
Other announcements?
No, no.
You do it, right?
I had to get that off my chest. I want to, on a more serious note, I'm holding up a flyer that's circulating around the community of Pacoima in Arlita. This young gal, Alyssa Gomez, was diagnosed with leukemia only a few months ago, and they're having a blood drive a couple of Fridays from now, Friday, February 4th, from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the auditorium at Canterbury Avenue Magnet Elementary School at 13670 Montague Street in Arlita. If you'd like more information, you can call my office at 213-473-7006. She's just a kid, she's a wonderful young gal, and she deserves to have the support of the community. Just giving a little bit of blood can save a life like Alyssa and many, many people in her situation. A good portion of the people that are diagnosed with the 30 diseases, just like leukemia, that affect people, afflict people, over 30%, three out of every 10 people are under the age of 19. So, this is the kind of effort that could actually save a life, this is the kind of effort that could actually allow someone to live a long and fruitful life, that otherwise, they may be stricken short in their life. So, I thank you for your attention once again. Canterbury Elementary School, 1:00 to 6:00 p.m., February 4th, a blood drive, not a bone marrow drive, but a blood drive, because a lot of these diseases require blood transfusions. And again, call my office, 213-473-7006, if you'd like further information. Or if you can't make it that day, we'll connect you with an organization that could take your blood between now and then. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes.
Yes, I'd like to announce and congratulate my chief of staff, Jose Gardeja. He had his baby this morning, should say his wife Susana did. Brand new baby boy, Sebastian. But he doesn't want to have anyone know, so don't tell him I told you guys. But let's congratulate Jose Gardeja.
Thank you. Other announcements? Mr. Labonge.
Members, out at the Santa Monica Civic Auditorium is a great exhibit called Photo L.A., a collection of worldwide photographers and collectors out there. And I believe Mr. Garcetti has a picture, Mr. Garcetti Senior has a picture in the exhibit. I went last night with Bridget. We enjoyed it at Santa Monica Civic throughout the weekend. And also, members, it's great to salute the Trojans and their national championship, but I think we should all send good luck to the Philadelphia Eagles, their head coach, Andy Reid, is a young man who grew up in Los Angeles, was the ball boy for our high school football team at John Marshall, and later became a great teacher as a coach, and then National Football League head coach for the Philadelphia Eagles. So, we should cheer the Eagles on over the Atlanta Falcons. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Members, are there adjournings motions? We do have adjournings tributes today. Could I ask everyone in the audience to please rise? Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And it's with great sadness, colleagues, that I ask that we adjourn today in memory of Ruth Peace, who some of you may remember, we celebrated her, I think, 95th birthday here in council chambers. Ruth Peace was born in Ashland, Nebraska, on January 30th, 1908, and she was raised in Atlantic, Iowa, which was then a small farming town of about 700 people, the oldest daughter of deaf-mute parents. She had to interpret for her family, take care of her younger sister, all from the early age of two years old. She was literally the ears and the voice of her family, always a star reader in school, which she attributed to her second language, sign language. She began to care for the neighborhood children around age 11. She helped mothers with ironing and with childcare. Her father was a shoemaker and couldn't afford the frills that a young girl desired, but she was not deterred. She began making her own clothing, and that led to elaborate suits and knit dresses. And in 1934, during the Great Depression, you may remember, we talked about it here, that Ruth created the prototype for the disposable diaper. And her husband sold, Robert sold the concept to Kotex for $1,000, which was a small fortune in those days, but we can imagine what would have happened if they had kept it. She and her husband settled here in Los Angeles in 1941, just before Pearl Harbor. And in 1945, they founded the Hollywood Little Red Schoolhouse Preschool, which is located in the heart of Hollywood on Highland Avenue. The school began as a response to the county's request for help in meeting childcare needs at that time, just after, in the post-war period. And for more than 23 years, the school served the area by providing preschool activities for 20 children. But it was clear in the '60s that the need for childcare was growing, and the rest is history. Little Red Schoolhouse has been an institution in Hollywood for many, many years. And she was a real pioneer both in education and business, as a woman at a time when many women didn't run businesses. In 1951, she and her colleagues formed the Preschool Association of California, which was the first statewide association for the promotion of quality childcare. And all kinds of celebrities used to come through there, Alan Hale Jr., Pinky Lee, Marie Wilson, then unknown Jane Mansfield, who had to borrow, actually, Ruth's lipstick and powder for her auditions when her children were there. So, after being a pioneer all these years, she's somebody who stayed active. I remember having outlived her husband, how she still had boyfriends into her 90s, who were much younger men in their 70s and 80s. And she always had an amazing spirit, a great dancer. She still went out dancing up to the last couple of months when she had an accident and unfortunately physically couldn't do that anymore. We were able to spend a little time together. Just over a month and a half ago, we were in Selma Park, one of the newest parks in the city in the heart of Hollywood, and she and I took some photographs together and spent some time together. And though she passed from us this past week, we know that Ruth was an inspiration to so many people. She's survived by her daughter Debbie Webby, who I think many of us know as well. I know Tom's probably going to add a couple of words. And Debbie has helped with Ferris, her husband, continued to run the Little Red Schoolhouse and be just a strong, strong public service component there in the heart of Hollywood, Central Hollywood Neighborhood Council. And she also has her son Robert Peace as well, and seven grandchildren, and seven great-grandchildren, and at least, we're still trying to count, five great-great-grandchildren. On the 30th, which would have been her 97th birthday, we will be having memorial service over at the Hollywood, Little Hollywood Red Schoolhouse, and please contact my office for more information. May she rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Eric, those were very beautiful words about her. And it's so beautiful that you had her here just a year ago with the whole family to honor that. But also, it's fortunate, because we don't know when our time is called, but when you lived that long, how wonderful it was. Just a few weeks before she passed, the greatest of all ambassadors to this city, Hugh Houser showed up with a camera to capture her, which will be on California Gold, I believe, on the 21st of January, which is today. But I'm not sure on that particular date, but it's a wonderful way to have your whole story told within the Red Schoolhouse and Ruth. So, God bless her memory.
Thank you. Mr. Labonge.
And also, another great Angelino who lived to be 91 is Carl Farrell. Carl Farrell, no relation to the great John Farrell, but the Farrell family came from Cleveland, where he had a little tavern in Cleveland and bought the Dresden Room on Vermont Avenue. He was a fixture in the Las Feliz community, which was the original Little Italy. As you would know, the old Little Italy used to be downtown and Chinatown. And when the Union Station came, the Chinese pushed the Italians out to Las Feliz, and they all gathered there on Vermont, the Dresden Room. And it was quite a place. I had seen him recently on a visit. He had lunch every day at 12:30 with his wife Sarah, and had a chance to visit with him. He was hospitalized. But he was an inspiration, is all we know about people and their businesses. When they're there, they drive the people to those businesses because of the love that they show and the quality of their food at the restaurant and the entertainment. And he was always there to greet people in the evening hour up until his 90th birthday. We had him here at his 89th birthday. He's survived by his wife Sarah of many, many years, and his sons Carl and Jimmy, as well as Doug. So, we ask that we adjourn in memory of the great Carl Farrell, the owner of the Dresden Room, the famous little restaurant in Las Feliz.
Thank you. Other tributes? Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two adjournings motions, ask that we adjourn in memory of Earl Holt, born in Memphis, Tennessee, January 7th, 1938, passed away at age 67 on January 11th. Grew up with strong values based on the church and family, graduated from Hamilton High School, attended the Tennessee State University, where he received a bachelor's of arts degree. At the age of 21, he underwent heart surgery at Vanderbilt, where they inserted a valve in his heart for irregularities. He was the first person in the country to have such a procedure. He moved to Los Angeles in 1960 and began his career with Rockodyne at North American Aviation. He then spent 20 years with Tyco Corporation and Internal Services. He leaves his wife Linda McElroy Holt, who's a longtime family friend, along with a host of other relatives. Also, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Margaret Elizabeth Hightower Curry. I was a long-term 8th District resident, committed her life to Christ as a child at the Jones Chapel African Methodist Church. As a young girl, she discovered that she could play hymns and the piano by ear and began to play only in churches and for her family. She later discovered she had a photographic memory, would often recite literature to illustrate and teach lessons in life. In 1935, she met and married her husband, Alfred Curry. They together had 15 children. In 1950, she graduated from nursing school and began a career in nursing. In 1960, she moved her family to Los Angeles and became a strong member of the Bethel African Methodist Episcopal Church. She continued her post in graduate studies at UCLA, served as a PTA president, a site, school, council member, and also an advisory council to Mayor Tom Bradley. She had significant love for children, and she had also worked as a placement counselor, L.A. County Adoption Services, where she taught classes at St. Cecilia. She became a widow in 1998 after a long and happy marriage. She is survived by nine daughters, 22 grandchildren, 12 great-grandchildren, and one great-great-grandchild.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I ask the council to adjourn in memory of Jack L. Judy. Jack passed away January 8th, 2005, in Northridge, where he's died since 1962. And as I recall, he was 98 years old. He is survived by his wife of 57 years, Margaret, son James and Scott, daughters Kathy, Linda, daughter Dorothy, and grandchildren Vanessa, Jason, and Megan. Jack served for 31 years as a lieutenant commander of the United States Navy. He rode the ranges of Wyoming as a cow rustler, worked for Boeing in Seattle, then Textron in Santa Clarita, and after he retired, he served many years as an L.A. City Zoo docent. Obviously a man of great talents and certainly lived a full life. May he rest in peace. Also, I'd like the council to adjourn in the name of Mary Newell Prince. Mary was the mother of Walter and Prince, a very well-known Valley activist, and actually opponent of mine when I ran for the council, but a man who I consider a friend, and I still talk to on a regular basis. His mother was 95 when she passed away on January 10th. She was an Irish lady with a gracious twinkle in her eye, very well-liked by the friends in the area she lives. She will be missed by all those for her company and the treasures she found, and memories and good conversations and pleasant times with a very gentle lady. She's survived by her daughter Pamela, son Walter, and brother Peter. May Mary Newell Prince rest in peace.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I'd like you to know that with us here today, we have Billy Yang. Billy is the son of the late Mr. Jay Yang, who was brutally murdered in my district in December of 2004. And Billy and his family have been put through the most horrific, tragic weeks ever since. And in fact, Billy in particular has spent a lot of time giving of himself in the public, trying to get assistance from the public so that his father's killers could be located. Billy's father, Jay Yang, was a Korean immigrant who owned and operated the St. Regis Junior Liquor Store since 1984. And really, although he did not live in the community where his business was located, became such a fixture, such a well-known and well-loved person in the community, that his death just sent shockwaves throughout my district. In fact, you can see symbolically today, we have Jim O'Sullivan from the Mid-City West Neighborhood Council to signal their support and to show their support for the family. The number of lives that Billy's father touched is, it's truly impossible to count. And the outpouring of grief that we've seen in the 5th District as a result of this terrible crime is something that we've just never seen before. You should know that thanks to the hard work of the Los Angeles Police Department, the personal efforts of Chief Bratton and the mayor, who both care deeply about this particular crime, four individuals have already been apprehended. The council has put a reward out there. There is a fifth person who is still being sought, and we hope that fifth person is apprehended soon. Mr. Yang is survived by his wife, Young Yang, his daughter Connie, his two sons, Alan and William, who's with us today, his daughter-in-law, Bo Young, and his grandson, Jeremy. Billy, I don't know if you want to say anything to us at this time or not. If you do, you should feel free. Yes.
Thank you, Councilman Weiss. Thank you, council. First and foremost, I'd like to reiterate his sentiments about the Los Angeles Police Department. I think when we had the press conference to announce the capture of the four suspects, it fell exactly a month after my father's passing. And given what we've seen in the surveillance tapes that were released, my family and I were regrettably somewhat pessimistic about the capture of these guys. And through whatever measures they went through to apprehend these suspects, we are eternally grateful for that. We are also grateful for the council and to Councilman Weiss in particular for putting up this reward and to, which will hopefully lead to the capture of the fifth and final suspect. While we can't really do anything to change what has happened, moving forward, we can find a bit of peace and comfort in the fact that these suspects for their heinous crimes can be put away, hopefully for a very, very long time. And just quick, a few words about my father. He lived to be 59 years old. He passed about 11 days before his 60th birthday, and a week before Christmas. And while we feel that it was a very short 59 years, obviously, because, you know, every day we are heartsick and heartbroken whenever we think about not only my father's passing, but the way he passed away well before, you know, he was still in his prime, and he was still working countless numbers of hours to put food on the table for our family. In the 20 years that he served West Los Angeles and his community, he just, I think, exemplified the American dream. He exemplified work ethic. And I can say this without bias, that my father should be a role model for every single American and members of this great city of Los Angeles. And again, he left behind my mother, my brother, my sister, my sister-in-law, grandson, and of course, myself. And again, while we really can't do anything to change the past, we can move forward, like I said, and just live every single day to honor him. And I hope, I hope we're doing so to our utmost. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for those words. Mr. Zine, did you have a presentation?
Yes, thank you. Request to adjourn in memory of Alma Gerber, passed away January 15th. Alma Gerber was born May 5th, 1915, in Alberta, Canada, passed away on January 15th. She was a longtime resident of Woodland Hills. away on January fifteenth, she was a longtime resident of Woodland Hills, member of the Woodland Hills Women's Club since nineteen sixty, and served in many offices, including president of the Woodland Hills Women's Club from nineteen seventy-two to nineteen seventy-five, chairing committees for this year at Coinga District, Alma was an accomplished artist and won many awards for her paintings, including a first-place trophy from the West Valley Artist Association, she was involved in many charities, including the Jemco Charitable Scholarship Foundation of the San Fernando Valley, as well as working with children of Camerio State Hospital and Pacific Lodge Youth Services, she will be greatly missed by her family and friends, she is survived by her husband Ernest, daughters Gwen Gerber and Carolyn Lavasser, sister Agnes Watson, and grandchildren Brent and Brooke, may Alma Gerber rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Zine, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Council is adjourned.